Looking at flying that position, you know, every year or every other year, I think it's a good idea.
Thank you very much. I'm going to be calling for a motion. Second. Unless we have further questions. Discussion?
We only have three seconds, so we can't accept unless you're providing.
Call this one?
No, that's, I just wanted, my question is where the subject is.
Okay, we accept it? Motion for that?
Yeah.
And a second? Right here, motion? Five eight?
Motion to approve, five eight, on the consent agenda.
Second.
That's the motion, and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Aye.
Any name? Any extension? Okay, say none, five zero. Thank you. We're going to go to action items. Action items, um... Here it is. Oh, here it is. I've used the two-sided papers, okay? Okay, item? Number one, A1. And that's resolution two thousand fourteen fifteen dash two.
Speaking of that, this is an action item, and the assistance to redundant services will revise the resolution. Thank you.
Good evening, Dr. Lusa, board, cabinet, and esteemed audience. I'm here to do some reading alouds. I get to read the loud, long resolution to you. I want to thank all the teachers who participated in Williams and had their kids with their textbooks on their desks or in shelves. I know that that's a little, it's a little hairy. Everything went very well. Carol, thank you very much for the heads up that there is a TE, Teachers Editions issue at Lincoln. I know this afternoon that Abel did a second run to schools to drop off materials, but I'll take a look at that and make sure that those materials are here or on their way. So, I bring before you resolution number twenty fourteen fifteen oh two, sufficiency of instructional materials compliance for the two thousand fourteen fifteen school year. Whereas the governing board of Salina City Elementary School District, in order to comply with requirements of Education Code, section one oh one one nine, held a public hearing on September eighth, two thousand fourteen, six thirty P.M., which is on or before the eighth week of school, which did not take place during or immediately following school hours, and whereas the governing board provided at least ten days notice of the public hearing posted in at least three public places within the district that stated the time, place, and purpose of the hearing, and whereas the governing board encouraged participation by parents, teachers, members of the community, and bargaining unit leaders in the public hearing, and whereas information provided at the public hearing into the governing board at the public meeting detailed the extent to which textbooks and instructional materials were provided to all students, including English learners in the district, and whereas the definition of, quote, sufficient textbooks or instructional materials, end quote, means that each student, including English learners, has a textbook or instructional materials or both to use in class and to take home. And whereas between the two thousand eight oh nine through the twenty fourteen fifteen fiscal years, the definition of, quote, sufficient textbooks or instructional materials, end quote, also means that all students who are enrolled in the same course within the Salina City Elementary School District have standard-aligned textbooks or instructional materials from the same adoption cycle. And whereas sufficient textbooks and instructional materials were provided to each student, including English learners, that are aligned to the academic content standards and consistent with the cycles and content of the curriculum frameworks in the following subjects: mathematics, McGraw-Hill My Math, copyright two thousand thirteen for grades K through two, McGraw-Hill Math, two thousand nine for grades three through five, plus the Common Core supplement, McGraw-Hill Glenn home math for sixth grade; science, Macmillan McGraw-Hill California Science kindergarten through six; history, social studies, Scott Forsman History, Social Science for California, K five; Prentice Hall Ancient Civilizations for grades six; English Language Arts, Hooten Mifflin Language Legacy of Literacy, five through six, Jungle Core; or Hooten Mifflin Gateways, four through six, Intervention Core; or Scholastic Read One Eighty, System Forty Four, four through six, Intervention Core. Whereas sufficient textbooks or instructional materials were provided to each student enrolled in foreign language or health class, and therefore, it is resolved that for the two thousand fourteen fifteen school year, Salina City Elementary School District has provided each student in each school with sufficient textbooks and instructional materials aligned to the academic content standards and consistent with the cycles and content of the curriculum frameworks. Wow, that's great. Thank you. I have a good surgery, too.
This is an action item, and it's a wrong call.
Entertaining a motion?
Move for approval.
So move. Will you give a second? Second. I'll second. Any discussion? Say none. All those in favor, vote for it.
Mrs. Garcia?
Yes.
Ms. Barnes?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Hoffman?
Yes.
Mr. Larison?
Yes.
Back zero.
Good job.
Sorry, I didn't see any more. I'm at Lincoln School. I have no materials, but it's, it's an issue. It's more than a couple TEs. I mean, the dual immersion, they have fourth grade, they have no math books, they have no Language Arts books. Every single combination class that was made, the second grade they're teaching, they've gotten basically half their materials, if that. I have, are like our list, I mean, it goes on and on, of teachers that don't have what they need, and it's impairing their teaching and the learning because they haven't taught social studies because they have no curriculum, but yet deficiencies go out in a week. So, it's a little frustrating for teachers.
Bring it up.
Yeah, I can look into this. I know that, I don't know, I know that at the end of last school year, especially for the combination class, we asked principals to give us orders for TEs because we don't have inventories.
Everything was ordered in May.
Okay, I can check with the IMC tomorrow and see if those are onsite. I know that either onsite, we do have an order of books coming in before this week, but I don't know specifically of any outstanding orders from again, but I definitely will check with them. Check the Google Drive. Okay? Yeah.
Coming from teaching a combination year after year, and I'm happy about this year, but I have run into that problem year after year, and I don't know if we need to streamline or make it, or, you know, an easier way to order our materials, because we ran into that huge problem at our site where we got tons of stuff we didn't even order, and apparently we didn't even order our materials. And we know we did. We, I mean, literally, we filled them out in front of the principal, she signed them, walked them over, we don't know where they went. And when we did call the IMC, no order was ever found. So, we need something a little more consistent and something that's a better communication between our schools and the IMC, so that way we're more prepared for the year, because it, I mean, it's, it's a freak-out panic. When school starts, you know, we don't have our materials, and we just want to get rolling. So, I know everyone's trying their hardest and overloaded, but it would be nice to see something a little more streamlined in that area.
I, I think there's lots of room for improvement, and I agree that those numbers need to be submitted to the IMC before the end of the school year, before it closes out. And I think that, from what I understand, this is now the first year that I've gone through this full cycle in this position. It's, information dribbles in, there is this automated ordering system that isn't consistently used by the sites, and that does need to happen. And there is another, another issue also, which is, we have numbers of books by grade level in the district, but then we don't, at the IMC, get the information on lost or damaged books, and so they aren't taken out. So there's, there are definitely lots of streamlining issues that need to be taken care of, and I will do what I can and work.
I know I saw you a lot.
With my apron on, cleaning.
Yes, I was here a lot.
Number B. Yes, thank you very much. This is the teamwork.
Now, if you, the teachers who just spoke up and said they didn't have the stuff, if you'd have spoken before we approved that resolution, we could not approve the resolution because it's not true. I mean, we can postpone this resolution for another time, you know, until, until you guys get your books.
Let's clarify that.
Well, everybody takes their position, and I'm going to say my position is exactly, we have a system in place, automatic, 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 I guess. And the issue is, yes, we all should be using the same system. I understand when a new system is, it takes a while for everybody to take it. So, we encourage to keep using the system that we have in place, and I can assure you, there's no standing order right now. The order that we have received, they are all, we all, we have bought all those books, and I do, yeah, understand that some orders that they just have to the system, we may not know, but we do, like she said, there's room for improvement. We need to do.
But I, please, I invite you to come because it was ordered in May, it was ordered in August, we told this order again two weeks ago. So to say there's no standing order when we have at least four teachers that are severely impacted by this, it's not true, because...
I believe you completely.
It needs to get fixed, though. At some point, it needs to get fixed, because we're going, we're in week five, and they should not be trying to teach sixth grade math without a math teacher's edition, they should not be trying to teach Language Arts without anthologies, or social studies without curriculum.
Yeah. What I'm trying to say, we need to do, the process needs to be cleaner, because, yes, I can invite you also downstairs, and we don't have any order picking, so there's a breaking in some places.
Let me, let me, we can continue this conversation over and over again, but I think from what I've heard so far, Sanders, Dr. Lusa have already said, let's get on to, let's team up on it, that's the way I think.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
If materials and curriculum isn't provided and teachers are trying to teach on their, well, hold on. Will they get negatively evaluated because they're, well, before we shake our head, I mean, their evaluation shouldn't reflect because their materials aren't.
Shouldn't be taken into consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am. One more question, and then we'll move on to the next item.
I have a statement that, that you're hearing frustration from teachers, and I, I want it, like, just put out there that I get it, whatever, the whoever, whatever, but where does it fall? It falls on the teacher's shoulders, and they, not only, they're, they're not sitting at a desk going, oh my gosh, somebody, they're sitting there at, standing in front of a room, thirty students, that they have to teach something to, and so it always falls on us, and, and I, you know, there, there needs to be more done, that we can't, you can't just tell us that the system needs to be looked at and all that. We need those books, and we need them now. The students need those books, and they need them now. And I will say to Mr. Larison that, no, it doesn't affect our evaluations, but as soon as we stand up in here and we're complaining about it, or we go to our principal, you know, I still don't have it, I still don't have it, I still don't have it, we are looked at as a problem, as we're not understanding that, gee, but the district, their, their system, you know, nobody ordered it, or nobody did this, or nobody, whatever. We are looked at as a problem. And you should know that, Janet, because you've been in the business long enough, that's what happens. Those of us who stand up here and say something, we're looked at as a problem, and it sounds like we have a problem.
Yes, Ms. Warren?
I just want to say one last thing. I think we're guaranteed, Mrs. Sanders, you will look into those, the specific ones, and make sure that they get the materials they need. If they're hiding somewhere, we need to find them.
Right.
And, I mean, whether there's, they're out or, you know, they should have all been ordered, but we need to make sure that you get the name of those teachers, and this week, we need, we need to find them, because they really can't teach without them.
I agree. And I'm, I'm sure that Marissa will send me her list. I'm waiting for it. It's not my list.
Next item is, we're going to get the number, I mean, our personnel department, this is Assistant Controller Position, Job Description. It was presented as information last, last meeting.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I would like, it has been revised slightly from our last meeting when we presented it for information. I think one of the comments that we had was a little confusion about the word confidential, and I think the new revised job description clears that. This is a management position, which will assist the controller. So we have the controller, and then we have an assistant controller to help with the workload that's increasing by the day. It's wonderful to see all the people that we're able to hire, that all of that LCAP and all of that budgeting has definitely increased the workload in the business department. So this job description is a management position, and it is, the title is Assistant Controller.
Any questions from the board? No? Okay. I'm entertaining a motion to accept the, the item. Personnel item is Assistant Controller Position, Job Description. Okay? Do we make a motion? In controlling our money, so I'll, we approve this job description. Yeah. We got a motion on the, on the item? Will I get a second?
A second that we didn't allow public comment? On an action item?
Do I have a second on this? This item? Okay, discussions on the board? Matt, do you want to say some, say something, Dr. Lusa? On the item?
No.
No. I background. I'm interpreting this as a way to consolidate talent. Consolidate talent, but at the same time provide a service. Be a little more productive and fast, because we do need, I remember just recently, well, everybody pooped out at midnight, that kind of stuff, but you put a lot of work on there. So I have a sec, a motion and a second on the, on the item. Any discussion among the board? Say again? All those in favor? Aye. All right. All those named? None. Okay, five zero. Thank you. The next item is under Personnel, it's Homeschool Special Education Teachers, Job Description. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is an item that we brought for information. There have been no changes. I would just like to say that this is, we are not creating a full-time position. This will be, we think, probably one of our current teachers, who will do some additional work with students that are not actually attending special ed classes in the county, but need some assistance at all.
Thank you. Thank you. Any questions in the board? Nothing? Okay, I'm entertaining a motion for the Homeschool Special Education Teachers Job Description, item. Will I get a motion?
So moved.
So moved by Ms. Warren. Will I get a second on this item? Mr. Hoffman? Yes? Before I call for the vote, there is a question in the audience, because I'm looking down here, I can't see it. Questions, will we?
I just have a question as to, if someone, if it's a job description and it's another position, someone could still apply for it? It's kind of after hours, or is this?
Yes.
This should be a position, so it should be a partial...
This is, this is after hours, it's not on a regular basis. It will be posted as additional work assignment.
Additional work assignment.
Okay? And posted first within the department because of the credential needs. And then if we find no one in the department, then we go to the district at large or outside the district.
Okay? Any discussion by the board? Call for the vote? All those in favor? Aye. Name? We have no, no votes against it. It's five zero. Yeah. We're going over to the item called Business, on the D. This is two thousand thirteen fourteen, un-audited actuals. And Mrs. Grant?
Mr. President, trustees, Dr. Lusa, cabinet members, and members of the public, great employees of our best school district in the county. First of all, the unaudited actuals are exactly that. We built the budget for thirteen fourteen, starting in January of actually two thousand thirteen. We ended up having it approved in June a year ago. We then executed that budget throughout the year and brought you, after the budget was approved, the first interim, which was the first snapshot of our execution of the budget, and then the second interim, which was the second snapshot, two-thirds of the way through the year, of what that budget looked like. And as we tracked it, if you recall, the first interim, it looked like we were overforecast and underspent about a million dollars on salaries, and that balanced out at second interim, and we finally got to the end of the year, we closed everything out, had some year-end spending, and we closed POs, and, well, we opened new ones for the next year. And we come now to the point of saying, this is the unaudited actuals for year thirteen fourteen. It will be audited by our auditors, they were already here once, they'll come back over Halloween. I'm not sure it'll be trick or treat, but they'll be here then. And they will then develop any deviations they see from this unaudited actuals report, and they will present that to you in January as any discrepancies or any changes they recommend from these unaudited actuals. So this is the final snapshot of how we performed for thirteen fourteen. Before we go any further, I've got to really commend Lona Christensen, my great controller here, our great controller. She was working eighty-eight and ninety hours a week, week after week after week, moving journal entries, moving things around, digging up every last receipt so we could account for what we had and make darn sure we had an accurate presentation of the final execution of the thirteen fourteen budget. She was unbelievable at it, she is so diligent, if you think that bulls will attack you, this one here, Lona Christensen was tremendous at attacking that budget and digging up everything to allow us to be here today with as accurate as possible an accounting of year thirteen fourteen. And with that, Lona?
Thank you. Every year, it seems to get harder. They keep changing this SAK software to have more and more parameters in it that will catch you on everything left and right. So you can feel comfortable that nothing could have gotten through this software without the system letting me know and not allowing an official export. And this all will get reviewed by MCOE and by auditor yet. But one of the pages I wanted to point out is your very second one behind your, in your packet, and that is your Form CA. It's just a simple little chart like this, and yet it summarizes a great deal of all the different types of tests we had to pass. One of them, the CEA, was your cost of running your classroom. We're required, as an elementary school district, to spend at least sixty percent of our money on directly instructing those children. It's different percentages for a K through twelve or for a high school district, but we have to do with a higher number, sixty percent, and we did pass it just under sixty-four percent. So we are spending the money where it needs to be spent. And that was a little bit trickier with the LCAP money because, and in the future years, because we're using a lot of that money to do a lot of training in these next future years, but we're, we were fine with thirteen fourteen. One of the other things it checks is, are no child left behind effort? Are we spending enough money in that area? And yes, we passed that. It checks the GAN limit. GAN limit is a kind of an obsolete requirement for us to do, and Paul GAN back in nineteen seventy-nine said he wanted to make sure that government agencies weren't spending more than they were taking in. So it does a formula based on how much we get for revenue and specifically for taxes, and every year, we're supposed to stay within those parameters, and, and we have. It compares what our ADA was from twelve thirteen into thirteen fourteen, and it makes adjustments. And so we also, we're okay on our GAN. It shows our indirect cost rate at four point two-two. It takes two years for that number to go into effect, so even though it was calculated on thirteen fourteen, it's two years before we get that. We've got one of the lowest costs in California, and not kidding, in California. We were, this year, we were at two point two-four percent. That says that we were not spending money at all in administrative and in order to support all these services. It's actually dangerously low. Anyhow, so we're going to see a little bit of a jump up for that, and that number will reflect, like I say, in fifteen sixteen. So that's going in the right direction. Over all, the, we've got a slide here, Jerry.
Yep, next slide.
This is the bottom line after this huge report. That second interim was the last update that was done on this, and this, we expected the revenues to be just short of the expenses, that ninety-four thousand, that would be considered deficit spending. That means we had more, more expense than we had revenue, and that difference, that shortage, came out of our savings, out of our extra reserves. But by the time we finally closed the books, first of all, we got more money because of some last-minute changes with the LCFF formula. They gave us a little bigger chunk of the pie, and our duplicated count went up slightly from eighty-five percent to eighty-five point three-five percent. I think that was because MCOE Special Education might have actually reported the students they take care for us falling into those category of pre and reduced economically disadvantaged students and the English learners. So all that helped us bring us in a little bit more money. Our expenses were down by almost a million, and a lot of that, it's all in services and supplies, a great deal of it was in the restricted resources, and I'll give you an example. Lori got us a wonderful math grant. It's five hundred thousand dollars a year, every year for three years, and, but we got it late. We got it late in the year, and it actually has like a year and a half to be able to spend it. But, you know, I booked the budget according to what we had applied for in the grant, five hundred thousand, and we spent eleven thousand. Big difference. But we have time on that, we're not in trouble, but those are the kind of budget things that happen. And so the bottom line is, we ended up instead no longer deficit spending and having a positive number at the end that can add into that bottom line, and that helps a lot moving forward into the next year.
I want to do two things in closing before any questions are entertained. Number one, remember, we told you that we don't know how much we're going to get for the year until it's over, and on the fourteenth of July, the state miraculously says, here's what you're getting. So we didn't know until the middle of July for sure exactly how much we were going to get, though it was all spent. Number two, I came to you about a year and a half ago, and Standard and Coors had downrated us from A to A minus. That was because of recurring deficit spending. That was because the state was in such dire straits that they were, you know, giving us...
a deficit factor that went up to over twenty-two percent. They were deferring thirty-eight percent of the remaining seventy-eight percent that we would get. So that red going away is a significant plus for our district as we restore our credit rating, which translates to lower interest rates for any bonds that we may move into down the road, and maintaining the low interest rates of the ones that we have. So two great things. A, we finally found out the fourteenth of July, as Lona said, two things were up, and the red goes away. Thank you.
Can I answer any questions for you?
When are we going to be, is the credit rate, when are they going to look at it again?
They'll, they'll look at it every year, but it may well be another year or two before they restore it because they want to see a pattern after deficit spending throughout the recession period where we exhausted all of our reserves.
And just one other question. When you said no child left behind, I haven't heard that for a long time. Why, why are we still dealing with that? I thought we'd moved on.
With the federal government? No, we don't. It, it has to do with some of our, I think it has to do with our Title I funds. You'll, you will find a report in your packet. It's alphabetical, so it's going to be very close to the end, and it will show you some of the different information regarding resources and where would that money's been spent. All the total money from the state and federal and local expenditures for everything is compared against how much of that piece is, again, taking care directly for helping the children. So yeah, it's, it's one of those forms in the SACs that pulls all the numbers in for me and says if it passes or not. It's not a real involvement, but it's still required, yeah. Anything else?
Lona, thank you very, very much. Oh, one here.
Just out of curiosity, how much do we have on the reserve? And what percentage?
Before or after the proposed tentative agreements?
I, I get you, okay.
You know, we have, we have a three percent required reserve, and then we have enough to cover hopefully five percent increases. And then we have enough left after that of about two million. We're going to need one and a half million to cover the QEIA next year. So that only leaves a, a small amount more extra. So we're not much over our three percent. It's, it's under four. It's like three point eight seven or something percent, and that's about it. But like I say, it, it didn't leave some of the other areas that we would have liked to kept reserves for, but been a long time since raised.
Exactly. Well, I'm just curious to see what's our reserve.
The state requires districts of our size up to a hundred million to maintain a three percent reserve over a hundred million, two percent. Both of those figures are grossly inadequate. State think tanks, consulting agencies recommend sixteen or seventeen percent. The three percent reserve doesn't even cover two weeks of payroll. But we do meet the state requirement, and that's another good thing because it's going to help restore our credit rating with Standard and Poor's that downgraded it. Moody's kept us where we were. We talked to them, told them where we were going, and so that's where we are.
I was just curious because our, our reserve is at like twenty-seven percent, so I was just curious to see what yours was at.
Who's got a twenty percent reserve?
About San Diego.
San Diego, yeah. The smaller the district, the bigger the percent should be.
Yeah.
But that's nice.
In terms of actual dollars, yeah, in the smaller area, basic aid districts have to be really high just for cash flow because they only depend on property taxes, too. They're not the one that needs to be.
Exactly. Thank you for your answer.
Thank you very much for the presentation and the information.
Thanks, Lona.
Action item, I'm entertaining a motion. Success and a second. Moved by Ms. Barnes. Second. Second, Mr. Austin. Austin, excuse me. Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Name? Say none. Five zero. Okay, resolution 2014-15-03, GAN limit again. Discussing your item, Mr. Stratt.
Thank you, Dr. Lusa. Lona mentioned the, the GAN limit briefly in our first presentation. Paul GAN, seventy-nine, said he didn't want agencies, state agencies, from the local school districts through the counties, the cities, to spend over a certain percent of the budget. And that became the GAN limit, and it was an amendment to the Constitution of the State of California. Right now, I would tell you, the GAN limit is about equal to a law that says you're no longer authorized to tether your horses inside the city limits in Salinas. It is really outdated, but it's in the state constitution, and it's not going to go away. So the perfunctory test that you give yourself based on your unaudited actuals that shows that you're within the GAN limit, it allows you to increase it also by board approval. No school district, except perhaps the basic aid district, has ever been above a GAN limit because we haven't, haven't ever had the money. Now, we're in a position where we're getting closer to that. So having said that, it's something that's very outdated. It's a legal requirement. I would like to read you the resolution for your consideration and approval. I think I've got four, whereas this, a resolved and four additionally resolved, and so here we go. Resolution number 2014/15-03. Resolution of the Board of Trustees of the Salinas City Elementary School District for establishing the GAN limit. Whereas in November of nineteen seventy-nine, the California electorate did adopt Proposition Four, commonly called the GAN Amendment, which added Article 13B to the California Constitution and, whereas, the provisions of that article establish maximum appropriations limitations, commonly called GAN limits, for public agencies, including school districts. And whereas, the district must establish a revised GAN limit for the 1314 fiscal year and a projected GAN limit for the 1415 fiscal year in accordance with the provisions of Article 13B and applicable statutory law. Whereas Government Code Section 7902.1 provides that school districts may increase their GAN limits under specified circumstances. Now therefore, be it resolved, that this board does provide public notice that the attached calculations and documentation of the GAN limits for 2013-14 and 2014-15 fiscal years are made in accordance, in accord and applicable, excuse me, in accord with applicable constitutional and statutory law. Be it further resolved, that this board does provide public notice that the attached calculations and documentation of the GAN limits for the 2013-14 and 2014-15 fiscal years include an increase of three million, six hundred thousand, nine hundred eight dollars to the 2014-15 GAN limit pursuant to the provisions of Government Code Section 7902.1. And be it further resolved, that the superintendent notifies the director of the State Department of Finance of the increase to the 2014-15 GAN limit. And be it even further resolved, that this board does hereby declare that the appropriations in the budget for the 2013-14 and 2014-15 fiscal years do not exceed the limitations imposed by Proposition Four. And be it further resolved, that the superintendent provides copies of this resolution along with appropriate attachments to the interested citizens of this district. The Board of Education takes the following action on this resolution.
I think we're ready for a resolution. Do you have any questions in here? No? I'm entertaining a motion.
So moved.
So moved by Ms. Barnes. Second.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Kim. Any discussion? No? Roll call?
It's a roll call. Lisa Garcia?
Yes.
Ms. Barnes?
Aye.
Lisa Kim?
Aye.
Lisa Kaufman?
Yes.
Mr. Larissa?
Aye.
Five zero.
Thank you very much, Mr. Stratt. Next item? Next item is informational, and it's under Administration Fiesta Familiar Annual Conference, October eleventh. Please come forward.
Good evening, Dr. Lusa, Board of Trustees, colleagues and community members. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Yatis Chavez, Director of Personnel Services and Special Ed, and I'm here tonight joined by Margarita Virueta and Manuel Mejia. They're both members of Fiesta Familiar, and they are hosting a tenth annual Fiesta Familiar Conference, which is a conference designed for Spanish-speaking parents of children with disabilities. And they want to say a couple words. Les damos las gracias, buenas noches, primeramente, que nada, a todos, y les damos las gracias, como dijo la directora. Mi nombre es Margarita Virueta, and yo soy madre de niño especial, Guillain-Syndrome Down, y va a la University Park. Y pues, aquí le paso al presidente también para que abra nuestras palabras con ustedes, y muchas gracias por todo. So, Margarita Virueta is a parent, she of a student with special ed, she's at the Tenth University Park, and she just wanted to express her gratitude for the support that the district is providing and ensuring that this is a successful conference.
Buenos dias a todos, y bienvenidos a dar las gracias al comité de la mesa directiva, a los directores y maestros del distrito, por darme una oportunidad el año pasado de venir con Fiesta Familiar a este distrito, y este año, que se va a llevar a cabo también el once de octubre. Gracias a alguien que quiera por ahí visitarnos y mirar lo que hacemos. Son bienvenidos, y gracias de nuevo a toda la mesa directiva.
So, Mr. Mejia, also a parent. His child is at the high school now, but he wanted to express his gratitude and extended invitation. This is the tenth annual conference. It'll be the second year that it's hosted at Brown and Meadows, and that's being sponsored by, in kind by, our district and have support from different organizations, but they want to express their appreciation for the support, the staff, and just an extended invitation to everybody.
October eleventh.
Yes, and the conference is held on Saturday, October eleventh, at Brown and Meadows.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. What's next there? Personnel, number one. Classroom teacher revised job description.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
I bring tonight to you a revised job description for classroom teacher, and we have attempted to make sure that we've covered all of the major duties and responsibilities, but not tie them to specific programs. So for instance, you'll see language about working cooperatively and collaboratively, but we're not tying it to professional learning communities. So that the job description doesn't need to be revised all the time when we may change a program in the future. Not that we're going to change PLCs, don't get me wrong, but the, the concept here is to cover the major duties and responsibilities, which really, over time, have not changed. So this is to update the job description.
Thank you. Any questions?
I just have one comment. Anyone who reads this job description could never say that teachers are underpaid. I mean, I think that this, this job description is amazing. It's so detailed, and I, I haven't looked at it until I received this, and I want to say, it should be up on the walls of every teacher's room. This is what you do. It's incredible what teachers do.
You meant overpaid, right?
Yes.
You meant overpaid.
Did I say that?
You said underpaid. You meant overpaid.
I meant, they're not overpaid, they're underpaid, okay. Thank you for catching that.
Pamela Connor. I was just wondering, if we're looking at a revision, is it possible to get in the board packets the original document so that we could then make comparisons? Otherwise, I am curious as to what was changed.
Got one more hand up there in the audience, and then we're going to continue.
Teacher, I just want to know if there are changes made to our job description if we, as teachers, would be able to get a copy back?
That's my question, too.
So more, yes.
I can certainly address some of the areas that were revised. One of the things that we had in the, in the last job description talked about the use of technology to input data and plan. We added the use of technology to input data, plan, and deliver instruction. Now, we all know we've been delivering instruction using technology for many years, but that was not in the job description. So that's an example of where we really just fine-tuned what was in the original job description. Another is collaborating with staff to increase student achievement and improve school climate. We know that the emphasis at this point in time, from the state and certainly from all of us, is that we want, and from parents, we want our schools to have a climate that is secure and welcoming and comfortable for staff and students. The, basically, the, and I can certainly bring to the next board meeting the, the current job description, but that gives you an idea of what the changes or revisions were.
Okay. Thank you. Your questions?
Yeah, just for Ms. Willingham. Just a quick question.
Sure.
Did you give notice to their union representative?
I did.
And an opportunity to sit down?
I have. I have shared the job description with union president.
And they met with you?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Actually, we're, we meet on a regular basis. It's very nice.
Let's go communicate. Okay. Next item? Number three is, tentative agreement with California School Employees Association. Let's see, Salinas Elementary Teachers Council. Teachers Council?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, we're very pleased that we do have a tentative agreement with this, with SETC. We have agreed to a five percent salary increase. That increase is across all the salary schedules in the salary article. We also agreed to an increase in the additional work assignment rate of pay, which is what we used to call the summer school rate of pay. So that is, that is also increasing by five percent. Stubborn column increases are also included. And in the Article Five, Hours of Employment, we agreed to language which compensates teachers for an hour of preparation when they are out of their classrooms for a full day of district staff development. And the only time that that would not apply is if the teachers are already participating in positions that have stipends for that kind of training. So those are the main items in the agreement with our teachers union.
Okay, want to go to next item? Next item is the California School Employees Association, Chapter 145, CSDA.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm also very happy to report that we have tentative agreement with CSDA. They also have agreed to a five percent salary increase. We did make one change in language to help to meet the needs of our medically fragile children. We've expanded the positions that may be trained to work with these students, and we were very happy that we were able to do that. We think that'll help meet the needs of summer